Morning, everybody. Welcome to the East Brady Wyandot Township Board of Supervisors Special Session for Monday, December 30th, 2019 at 8:00 a.m. Today, a recording device will be used during this meeting, and I wanted to open it up for public comment for non-agenda items. Rules of conduct for public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So I'll open it up to public comment for non-agenda items. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. I don't think we have those yet, do we?
No.
No.
Okay. And then, new business. There was a, sorry, we're coming off of a little bit of a break here, but there was an MBR letter dated 12/27/2019. So I see, Sebastian, you're here. Is that something you wanted to talk about, or were you wanting to put that on hold for your solicitor? We have other-
My solicitor was supposed to-
Okay. So we'll bump it, we'll go down, and we'll come back up. Okay. So ordinances and resolutions for consideration, Resolution 13 of 2019, adopting the budget for the East Brady Wyandot Township for fiscal year 2020. I'll turn that over to Luke.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, other member of the board. In front of you is a draft Resolution 13 of 2019, which adopts the final budget for the coming year 2020. Just as a reminder, the reason we're here this morning primarily is because there was a mix-up in the advertising that the preliminary budget was available for review, and not enough time would elapse between the advertisement and when it was necessary, according to the Second Class Township Code, to adopt a final budget, which is December 31st. So what's in front of you is a resolution, a line item budget, which is printed on 11-by-17 paper, and then a booklet that is the details of specific line items. And that is a 43-page, letter-sized booklet, and then you have your draft resolution. So at this time, there has been no changes since the last time this was before you, except that the dates, today's dates are filled in on where dates are referenced on both of those budget documents. At this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to adopt Resolution 13 of 2019, adopting a budget for 2020.
So moved.
All in favor? I'm sorry. I'll second, but before I do, any questions from the audience? I should have asked that first, too. No? Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess. It sounds like you're waiting on your solicitor anyway, so we'll take a five-minute recess, and then, yeah, it's going to be, I guess we'll call it an executive session. We're actually going to call our solicitors to discuss legal matters, and then also maybe we'll plug out a phone call to see where Supervisor Winters is. Thank you. All right, guys, so we're back here, and I guess, as I started to say, we're coming back after a holiday break here, and I guess there was an, Ms. Dunn, you may want to come up for this. There was an extension that was not granted, now I'm understanding?
We're heading through tomorrow to grant an extension, and we'd be willing to do so based upon the terms that I laid out in the letter that I sent home Friday.
Okay, so, I don't know. At this point, I'm not comfortable with the terms, to be honest with you, just me personally. So I guess at this point, we'll just vote. I'm assuming that would be the ultimatum?
I don't think you can without advertising. You could have a special meeting tomorrow, as long as there's 24 hours no advertising, right, Mr. Pierceall?
I believe that's-
Which, are you referencing the requirements of the sunshine law, or some requirement of the MPC?
MPC.
Okay. I plead ignorance there, but this is an advertised meeting of the board of supervisors.
Oh, certainly. It's an advertised meeting for the purposes advertised.
For, I'm sorry, what did you say?
For the purposes advertised.
Yeah. Which was the budget plus any other business that comes before the board.
No, I don't believe that that-
Yes.
Well, you know what?
We can't do this without the engineer. I mean, quite frankly, I'm appalled at the fact that, you know, I find out after our meeting on the 19th, that not only did the township know that the engineer wasn't going to be here and not inform us, but that the township hadn't even requested that the engineer be here until the last minute, because that's what his email said. Based upon the short notice given me, I can't be there because of a scheduling conflict. We were always going to be here on the 19th. Why was the engineer finding out about it at the last minute?
He didn't find out about it at the last minute. I sent an email to all of the reviewers the day that that was requested. Nate's email was that he could not make arrangements to have either himself or Chris Potterjoy there. Wasn't last minute, that was forward.
Well, he said based upon the short notice. And to me, that's-
That's his statement.
And then, we were hamstrung. It seems like it was, quite frankly, a coordinated effort to prejudice us before this board. You know, there were planning commission meeting minutes, everybody had them but us, even though I specifically asked for them to be provided to me. We didn't have them, and then the engineer's not here to basically be able to represent to this board what he did to the planning commission two weeks before. And based on that, you know, you had Mr. Esty sitting here making basically engineering comments without being an engineer. It wasn't fair.
Well, we have the engineers, we have the engineer's review letter, and I think we are in a position where we have to make a decision, and my position is that we make a decision this morning, we can confer with our solicitor, who we were not able to reach this morning when we took our break for the executive session, and if she advises us that we have to come back tomorrow and do it again, then we will. But I'm prepared to move forward this morning. And I will-
Can I address the board? So I wasn't able to be here on the 19th, but my understanding, in addition to what we just talked about, the fact that we've been at this for four years, working with you guys hand-in-hand, working with your ordinance task force, multiple meetings with Trails Committee, Historical Committee, we show up, we get a planning commission recommendation despite the attempt, the effort by Mr. Esty to change that decision. We come here, the township engineer's not here, we didn't have advance notice, the regular township solicitor's not here, we didn't have advance notice. Instead, Mr. Esty's here, who has clearly been advocating against the project for whatever reasons. He makes representations regarding what happened at the planning commission meeting, in particular, what the township engineer represented. Township, the planning commission chairman was here to make clear what they decided and what their vote was, which was a three-to-two vote to recommend. We asked, as I understand it, we asked Mr. Esty and the board to give us one example of how our submission was lacking in term, for the purpose of granting preliminary plan approval, which is your process, the bifurcated process that you asked us to comply with. We made clear in a letter two months ago that stated how we complied with preliminary plan requirements under your ordinance, your code. There was no response to that. We asked it verbally at the meeting for Mr. Esty to give one example, and he couldn't. And I know it was also mentioned the fact that we have a timing issue. I understand that it was said, "It's not your problem." I understand, "It's not your problem, it's my problem." But here's, my problem is also the fact that we're having a party, Mr. Esty, advocate against, in contradiction to what his board recommended, his plant, the planning commission recommended to this board, and then you're asking us to put two more months, or a month and a half more time on this, when our position is that we've addressed it in multiple revisions to our plan, responses to probably three or four reviews. We've addressed those things, and nobody can sit here and tell us how we're lacking other than there's too many open comments. So my problem is, I got to, I have to deal with the fact that I'm, my contract's jeopardized by the fact, and I can't even point to the reasons. You have to give us a reason why you're denying it, as I understand-
We will do that. If we deny it.
And I don't even think anybody's even said, "Yeah, we are going to deny it." I think the most important thing is, it was a, it was an explained situation through the engineer that there was a lot of cleanup that needed to be done. The project itself, I didn't think anybody necessarily on the engineering side had a problem with. I think it was just, there was a lot of open-ended issues that I, basically, my thought process was, those are things that could have been cleaned up in the next month, you know, maybe not even.
Some of them, we're going to continue to move forward and address those issues.
And we have.
And those, and we have, and those, but the issues that need to be cleaned up, by and large, based on what my consultants are telling me, are issues that are related to more to final plan approval, not to preliminary plan approval. We're before you for preliminary plan approval.
And I'm just thinking outside the box. Is this not something that, and I had asked you guys this at, and I know Ms. Dunn didn't have an answer at the time, and it didn't seem like it was going to be a problem. I'm not asking for the world, I'm asking for, you've submitted your project status. There's things on that that needed cleaned up. That was it. It was basic stuff. I don't think there was anything anybody was asking for any differently. If so, you would have heard it by now. I had asked that day if we could have an extension to give you guys an opportunity to clean some things up, so that we didn't vote on something that, at the time, seemed a little mishmashed. You know, I'll lay it out one last time. I mean, if you guys have the opportunity to, you know, I never said we needed two, three months, it wasn't, that wasn't my request, I think that was just interpreted, but I was just saying time to clean up some of the loose ends. And you had said you had to confer with your client, and then I thought we were good to go until February 6th. If you're saying we're not good to go to February 6th, but let me finish. I don't, I don't, also, I don't approve with the holding us to a flame, saying, "You'll get your wants, but under these circumstances." That's not how it needs to work. It needs to work in a fair and balanced system, whereas there was things that needed to be cleaned up, those things get cleaned up in a month, we're good to go. We press forward, we vote on it, everybody's happy. Right now, it feels like we're rushing something that it's not going to take much time to fix.
Can I, here's my concern. My concern, when I heard about what happened, was that I, our position is that we've addressed what we need to address to get, for you to act on preliminary plan approval. That's what we did. The planning commission voted to recommend based on that. My problem is, I come back on June 6th, I address additional items, I'm not going to address everything that's required for final, because I can't. It's, there's certain things that can't be done within that time period, and aren't, we're not required to. So I come back on February 6th, Mr. Esty says, "No, you're still, you still haven't, there's still too many things," and the board decides that they're going to, they're going to say, "Well, yeah, there's still, there's still open things." In my opinion, there's one, there's a couple of issues related to the municipal authority that are, in particular, are things that, you know, and we can address them here, but we've addressed them in other meetings. It's clear on the record, those requests that Mr. Esty made in his representation of the municipal authority, that seem to be some of the main issue, the primary issue that we're dealing with.
But understand, Mr. Esty is not the Bible, okay? We make our own executive decisions based off of the information that we have. Do we listen to our solicitor? Absolutely. But, as you say, you've also talked to your planning commission members, they were in favor for it. I don't think we're that far off, and I'm just trying to be as blunt with you guys as possible. This is not some conspiracy theory to try and, you know, push you guys off for, I would prefer a cleaner form in front of me, that's just my philosophy. So, again, we can vote on this today, and if we're right, we're right, if we're wrong, we're wrong, we'll figure it out, maybe we'll do another one tomorrow, I don't know. Or we can push this off for the, for a month, and-
We can't push it off, because we have to have a letter to that effect, and the letter was supposed to be in by Friday, it's not here, so.
So let me, one more thing, I'm sorry, Lindsey. You said Mr. Esty's not the Bible. The problem is, Mr. Esty represents a municipal authority, the planning commission, and he represented the board of supervisors. At both the planning commit, he's taken positions relative to the municipal authority that we've addressed. He's taken, he took, he took a stance relative to our application in front of the planning commission, and after a long period of time, the planning commission ended up voting in three-two. I understand he's not, but he showed up at the board of supervisor, he's clearly in a position where he's advocating against our application. I'm uncomfortable with that process. I'm uncomfortable with the process, and I expressed that after the fact.
Would you prefer, for the next, if it gets a grant and an extension, again, we need a letter, that would be the only problem, and unfortunately, we don't have that, but that Ms. Camp was, again, Ms. Camp is the solicitor, she was away, and Mr. Esty's been filling in for a couple of those meetings. So, again, I'm trying to, you know, throw out the olive branch, there's no sentiment of, go ahead.
Mr. Scribbner, I know it's not you, and I know it's not a conspiracy on your part or any of the board members' parts, but for us, it comes down to a fundamental issue of due process. You say Mr. Esty's not the Bible, but you also said you were going to depend on, you were going to take the advice of your solicitor.
Solicitor.
And, and your solicitor, quite frankly, has an objective conflict of interest. So, to the extent that that was the only consultant to whom you had access that evening, he didn't have the engineer who could address and advise the board that the outstanding comments that make you uncomfortable are items that are addressed during final plan approval, not preliminary plan approval. So, you know, between that and having Mr. Esty sit here, and Mr. Fisher, I know that you, as a lawyer, can appreciate the case that I cited in my letter. It's not, it's not open to debate.
I've not seen your letter, so.
Oh, okay. The Supreme Court has held that a solicitor who sits for another municipal entity cannot then advise the board of supervisors during its vote as to what it should be doing with respect to that application.
It seems to me that we, first of all, I want to say that I think the township has cooperated throughout this entire process. I don't know where this got sidetracked, but there's always an issue that some things could go from preliminary to final. We've tried to express to you that the concern that I have, and I think that Kyle has, is that you have too many things for preliminary approval that are outstanding at this point in time. So, and I think Kyle went bent over backwards at the last meeting to say, "We got the comment that we can address the majority of those," and he said, "Fine, we'll give you the time to address them." So I don't know why you're digging your heels in to force this to preliminary approval, but you're playing Russian roulette here, and we've tried to make that clear to you, but it doesn't seem to sink in.
So, first of all, your first statement, I 100% agree with. Township has dealt with us very transparently, honestly, and we, I feel like we've done the same in return, and the process has been very cooperative throughout. I don't know what happened, and I think it happened at the planning commission, the last planning commission meeting, and the board of supervisor meeting, that you say we're digging our heels in. Mr. Fisher, you just said, "There's too many open issues."
To approval from other groups and so forth. And we've always been willing to defer those issues, make them a condition of preliminary approval, and then address it before final. But there are a number of other things in the Penone letter, which I'm being told we can address, but they haven't been addressed yet.
But, Mr. Fisher, though, the items in the Penone letter, if Mr. Klein were here, or somebody from his office were here, that's my point. This is where we're prejudiced. If he were here, he would say, "I reviewed this as though it were a final plan." So outstanding items in that letter do not relate to preliminary plan-
That's your opinion.
It's not an opinion, though. This is, objectively speaking, Mr. Esty could not point to one item outstanding.
Again, our practice in the past has been that we want a relatively clean plan, a relatively clean review letter when we give preliminary approval.
And if that's the case, if you, if you, if the board would like to see us address final plan issues now, before any approval is given, then I feel like it's a relatively reasonable request to ask-
That's a misstatement of what I just said. We don't want you to, we understand that there are going to be outstanding issues between preliminary and final. We understand that, and we're willing to accept that. We've always been willing to accept that with every other plan, but not all of the things that are in the Penone review letter, so.
So which ones? I mean, if I read your code, and I-
Right now, it's-
Our traffic engineer was just here the other day, and he said, "To his knowledge, none of his questions have been answered." So, I mean, that alone, for me, is a red flag.
Mr. Scribbner, if, this is another issue that I have. If Ms. Camp had been here, Ms. Camp would tell you that the meeting that we had with the township consultants on the heels of the conditional use process was a comprehensive meeting where we went line for line through Mr. Heinrich's letter, and Mr. Heinrich was present, and Ms. Camp took those agreements, we came to agreements on every single one of them, and Ms. Camp incorporated those by reference into the conditional use decision and order, which has been our obligation and has been incorporated into the plan. To the extent that there aren't crosswalks delineated on the plans yet, Mr. Heinrich said that, yes, that's a final plan approval issue. So, I understand that Mr. Heinrich has global concerns about the township and the need to address, you know, township-wide traffic concerns, but that isn't something that is our burden to address as the applicant, certainly during preliminary plan approval.
All right, so here's how I'm going to leave it. I think we've spent plenty of time on the negating back and forth of who's right, who's wrong on this. The way we left it the last time, the last meeting, was I had asked if there was any possible way we could be granted an extension. We, you took a minute to confer with your client, you came back, you said yes. As far as I was concerned, we were good to go, we were moving on, but then things changed, and I guess you changed your mind and didn't want to go that route.
I found out some additional information, yes.
So, how I'll leave it is, we can go back to the same way we were. We have two options, really. One, and today, we'd have to be handed over today, and probably before the end of this meeting, an extension letter granting us an extension until said time, I don't know what that is yet, I thought it was going to be February 6th, or we just have to vote on it. And, you know, I can agree with you, there's certainly, I know you have a stance that there's a conflict of interest, I believe there's a conflict of interest, now, he's not here today, but with you and Supervisor Winters being a legal representative for him, so I'm sure that this is-
But that doesn't prejudice anyone, there's nobody opposing this application.
I disagree, I disagree, but it doesn't matter. That's not for me to decide. I just, you know, it's noted, and he's not here anyway, so it doesn't necessarily matter right now. So that's really it, that's, and that's how we'll leave it. If you're willing to grant us an extension, and without conditions, for a certain amount of time, and again, it doesn't, I thought it was going to be February 6th, but if it isn't, it isn't, then great, if not, we'll vote on it, we'll move on, and that's all there is. I mean, we really can't kick the can anymore on this.
I don't think it's unreasonable. You stated it as a condition, but I think it's my fundamental, my client's fundamental right to have a non-conflicted solicitor and the township engineer here to advise the board on its vote. The fact that that is striking you as a condition that is unreasonable to-
I just told you that I would use-
I don't think it's the-
Solicitor, I just said that we would use Solicitor Camp going forward for this issue, and then if that would put your mind at ease as well. Again, remember, he was filling in for a situation. So, you know, again, if you're content, I'll put that on there as well, that we'll use Solicitor Camp for the extension, and you're willing to put that in writing before the end of this meeting, great. There's no conspiracy theory here, there really isn't. I know you feel as though, but it's not the case.
No, I don't, I don't for the boards, for purposes of the board, I really don't. But I do feel like, and I do feel like the things that have come to my attention since December 19th, there has been somewhat of a coordinated effort behind the scenes. Whether or not you're aware of it, I'm not saying you're aware of it, I'm not saying you're a part of it. I am saying it's troubling, and it is my job to advocate for my client and my client's rights, and one of my client's rights are the rights of due process. We have not been granted due process in this portion of these proceedings, and it's-
I disagree, but again, I'm just stating my obvious reaction to this.
So, I think we're certainly not trying to hold you to the fire, anything like that. We are just looking for a reasonable, a reasonable confirmation that when this is reviewed by the board for a vote, it will be done with the consultation of Ms. Camp or some other neutral solicitor, and your township engineer will be here.
Well, I can't guarantee that the township engineer will be here. I know our township engineer has also just been given more duties on his workload, so that I can't promise you. Obviously, you know, I can promise you that he will be referenced in any decision made, obviously, and I take the engineer's opinion as much weight as I do our solicitor's, for what it's worth. So, again, respectfully, that's where I stand. We have two options. One, we continue with the extension, we use Solicitor Camp for our, for our knowledge on the solicitor's side, and continue to use the Penone and Heinrich and Associates and Hydratera as their consultation for services, and, but we would need that letter before the end of this meeting in order to do so.
Okay. So if the board is not willing to waive the prelim-final bifurcation, then can we extend through a point in January? Can we have a special meeting?
I have no problem. Again, Supervisor Fisher will not be here then, we'll have a new board, and I don't want that to have a problem with anything you have, but I don't think it would be, but just remember, that new supervisor's going to need time to get caught up to speed on some of these issues as well. So, for what it's worth, it may be okay, it may hinder you, I don't know, but I don't have a problem moving it up.
Okay. That sounds good to me. I will note that the new board member has been present for the last several meetings and planning commission meetings as well, so I'm comfortable that-
I appreciate that. Jay, there was, did you want to say something? At one point, I thought you were going to say something related to our letter, but you said you haven't read it, you guys haven't read the letter that was submitted.
I have not seen the letter.
And that's the unfortunate thing. We're coming off of a break here, and, you know, I read dribs and drabs of it, I know the gist of it, but as I said, I wasn't comfortable with conditions on that at this point. I'm one of three. So, again, do you want to, are you prepared to stay and write something up? And then, what's a comfortable time for you? Today is the thir-
The next meeting would be the 16th of January.
And then, what's our next one, is that February 6th? Is that what it is?
February 6th.
That was the February 6th meeting.
So-
Can we just discuss that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, in terms of the timing for the next meeting, one of the things I, it remains my concern, and that is that, because I don't know what issues I have to address for the board to be satisfied for the purpose of preliminary plan approval, I do know that even before the meeting on December 19th, our engineer has, in the process of continuing through our, has a number of things that they're doing in the month of January. I guess, coming back full circle, February 6th gives us ample time to address those, as many of those as we can. My concern, again, is I come back on February 6th, and still say, "No, there's still-"
So how about this? How about this? We'll, January, so at our, at our January 16th meeting, was it again? We'll follow up with engineers to make sure that we're all on the right page. Again, trust me, this is one less thing I want kicked into the new year, I really don't want to be doing this, you know, and again, it's basically starting from scratch, I get that. There is nothing that scared me other than the engineer's comments, which, you know, just were, could have been bad, could have been good, you know what I mean? But let's go with that, and we'll stay with February 6th, but again, you guys will have to give something in writing today, because otherwise, within half an hour of this meeting, they're going to have to schedule it for tomorrow, and we're going to be right back when we do.
Understood.
I will certainly do that, I mean-
Well, I would suggest that we recess this meeting, allow him is done to, it just can be a handwritten note, it just has to be something in writing. She can write it out, and then we can, because we have to go back on the record and approve the extension request, so.
So let's do this, let's, it's about nine, it's about 8:40, so let's say 10 minutes, good? All right, so let's reconvene here at 10 of 9.
Okay.
Bye. Okay, guys. Okay, guys, we're gonna go back on the record here. So as we, as we left, we were discussing a, an extension, and so I'll, if it's okay, I'll read this. "As counsel for NBR Inc., I am authorized to grant the board of supervisors for East Brandywine Township an extension for consideration of the preliminary plan application for the Weaver Track dated November 9th, 2018 through," the extension would be, "through February 6th, 2020, and it's signed Lindsey Dunn Esquire for representation on NBR Inc."
I'll make a motion that we grant the extension requested in Lindsey Dunn's letter of December 30th.
And I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Do we have anything else?
Uh, trying to get my agenda back here.
Your announcement, Otis.
We have an announcement, and then I also have a question relative to that same announcement.
Okay, so, so first we'll do a public comment on agenda items. Seeing none, we're going to move on to notices.
Yeah, I, I have no idea exactly where to jump in here, but I had included in your packet this morning a draft agenda for the reorganization meeting scheduled for 8:00 AM on January 6th. This is a, a list of consultants and staff and township volunteers who, who serve the township. I have completed it with the incumbents filled in, and I would like to post this document to the website, and would like the board's preauthorization to do so. You have any questions about what I have prepared?
Have we done this in the past?
Yes.
We have done it?
Yeah.
For several years.
I've never asked permission to post it before, but I never served as interim secretary before either.
The, the agendas for every meeting, I believe, are posted in advance, are they not?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, and again, I mean, it's gonna be voted on in the meeting anyway, so I don't think it really matters.
All right, thank you.
The only thing was, Luke and I were discussing it, if there's any changes, he did send it out earlier in December, asking if there were any changes to let him know.
Okay. While we're discussing notices, I, I felt it necessary to bring it up, just for, if there was a way to, to remind, our, our trash service is now going to be Tuesdays. And I received a, a phone call last, last night from a, from a concerned citizen, that he has explained it to numerous people, he was wondering if there was anything else the township could do to remind people. He said that in his township, they used a, his prior township, they used a reverse 911 for emergencies and, and major changes to the township. He had suggested that as, and I just wanted to bring it up as an option, and I'm assuming today will be the first, is today going to be the first day?
Tomorrow will be the first collection by A.J. Bozenzky.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
The reverse 911, I don't know if that would be a really good idea, if you're gonna be, for like notices like trash, I don't know if you wanna do that.
No, and I was, he was just throwing it out as, as a scenario that they used to do.
Kyle, it was put in the newsletter, it's on the signboard.
So maybe, maybe what we wanna do is re, repost it on Facebook, just to, you know, get some hits on it. I just wanted to point that out, because his concern was, he explained it to numerous people over the holidays of his neighbors, and not one person knew that. Now again, ignorance is bliss, people don't pay attention sometimes to this, but it, you know, if we can do everything in our power to get it out one more time, that'd be great.
I, I would be happy to, to do an updated post on Facebook and on Nextdoor.
Perfect, perfect.
But you also have that, is it, what is it called, Civic Alert or Civic something or other?
Correct, that is only for subscribers.
Right.
And, and that reminder actually was distributed Saturday automatically.
Great.
I didn't see it, so I don't, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, well, it's, it's kind of interesting, 'cause there's multiple modules on the website you can subscribe to. This particular alert was for those who have subscribed to the calendar module. So, so for example, you can subscribe to get alerts when agendas are posted, you can subscribe to get alerts when a newsflash or a, a alert goes out. It's a separate subscription for the, for the...
Well, I, I would suggest that you send that to people who have subscribed to the news, because maybe you'd get more coverage.
We'll do so.
Put something in a newsletter, again, tell people how to use it.
So, so at this point, there's, there's three, three communication tools I'll utilize today. One is an update to Nextdoor, one is an update to Facebook, and one is an update to the newsflash module of the website and the associated SMS text and email distribution list.
Okay, maybe knock on some doors today, that's great, thank you very much.
It's on the LED sign as well, I...
All right, the, the 2020 East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Annual Organization Meeting will be held on Monday, January 6th, 2020, at 8:00 AM. There will be no work session on Thursday, January 2nd, 2020. The...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's what I was...
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. Make a motion when you adjourn.
So moved, all in favor?
Aye.